All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. I do want to clear up one misconception here. And Charles, when you and I had the conversation, I indicated we had some people that were on the agenda that were coming to speak, and the reason we put them on the agenda, they want to present something to council. At the work session, they have unlimited ability to speak before us, but that does not mean that anybody from the audience is then given the opportunity. You have to be placed on the agenda in order to speak, so I'm sorry if that was confusing to anybody. But if the particular topic or the item is on the agenda and you've asked to be on the agenda, then you have unlimited ability to speak. So I just wanted to clear that up before we move forward.
So first item on the agenda was the proposed digital sign ordinance, and again, it was in your package, but we did receive a question from Brian and Annette Payne regarding the general sign regulations and amendments to 1335A2 and 1335A subsection four for standards of specific types of signs. So what I thought might be best, I think Brian's here, rather than me explaining what he was requesting, I'll let Brian explain what he was requesting, and then we can go from there then as well. Let me hand these out as well. These are the sections of 1335, and then also, these were also amendments that were being worked on, that were being worked on as well prior to Mr. Payne's request. So as he's going through his, you can kind of match up where he's at within these ordinances, within this ordinance. But it's also red line version as to some of the additions that we would like to put in from an administrative standpoint to kind of clarify the ordinances as they're written now, and do not incorporate any of Mr. Payne's. So I'll just turn it over to Mr. Payne so he can discuss what he's requesting.
Okay. I apologize because again, that's what I thought, I would just come and see what was going on and take notes, so I do not have... I'll pour yours real quick. Basically, my wife and I own what is referred to as the old doctor building on South Fourth Street, which is right across from BB and T Bank. Opportunity presented itself to us this spring to acquire digital sign boards, because I had been asked by a few people, several people, about doing advertising on the side of the building. Part of it was back in the spring with campaign stuff. So as we had more input from businesses in the city and stuff, we pursued, possibly on that route, came to code enforcement. I had Planning and Zoning meeting, I spoke to people before, prepared a letter after I went through the ordinance to the best of my abilities, I'm not a lawyer or anything like that, but noticed that there were probably about three things that needed to change in that ordinance for the city to allow me to use those signs down there, not only to advertise for potential tenants in our building and current tenants that are in our building to try to keep as many businesses downtown as we can, but also to do external advertising on those signs. Because Annette and I are also currently looking at additional signs, that piece of property that we have in Nutter Fort. I had given, again, I apologize, I mean, you guys wanted me to speak out of rather, but I had, I think I gave it, did I give it to Martin or you? Remember the picture that I gave you guys? It was actually a photograph of the building that I could bring at the Nudge meeting or whenever you needed, that gives a representation. They did a digital overlay for me, took a picture of my building and put what the signs would look like on there. The sign is about four and a half foot high and eight foot wide, and we have a rather large, three and a half story building on that side. We had, we were able to acquire two of the signs for less than what we could buy one, so we wanted to stack them together on top of each other. So for example, let's say that we put the city of Clarksville local in the top one, on the bottom, we could say that their, you know, city council meeting's here, we could put the Italian flag on top, announce that it was the Italian Heritage Festival on the bottom, so it would be, they could be either used together or separately with that.
If I can ask you a question?
Sure.
Where is the signs, or where are the signs going to be in relation to the top of the federal credit union or the city credit union?
Probably from the top of the credit union, it's going to be at least probably 12 to 14 feet above that. And they're set so that when you turn from Pike Street onto South Fourth Street, they'll be elevated up above that. Because with the clock, even with the clock, the light posts and everything, they're placed so high up on the building that it also gives us an advantage point for all the traffic that has stopped on Pike Street, looking out from Jackson Square, North Fourth Street coming to Pike, excellent viewing. The sun never strikes on that side of the building, so, and they are high resolution signs, which means they're not grainy. And the other thing is too, since we've owned that building down there, that seems to be a major thoroughfare for the city of Clarksville. There's a lot of traffic that turns that corner. So in regards to obstruction or in view of the credit union, like I said, I could bring, I'll actually, I could drop one off to the credit union, or anybody wants to see that mock-up that the sign people did.
Yeah, I would like to see it. I have not seen the picture of that. Yes, you gave me the letter, but I didn't see any attachment. Does anybody else have any questions?
Have you viewed it from the vantage point of sitting in a car?
Yes.
It seemed, would seem to me that off the ground, that would be pretty high, and if you're seated in a car, that close to it, it might be a little tough to see.
No, because...
I mean, out my side window, I guess, if I'm on Pike and I turn my head, if you're turned on to fourth, would you be able to see it?
Yes, because the sign, the sign company that sold us the signs came down and took measurements and, you know, even told us, you know, whereabouts to put the signs and that type of thing.
How, how, how high off the ground is it then? How many feet off the ground?
From the ground up, it's roughly about 24 feet.
Oh, okay, that's not...
Yeah, and then you're looking at eight feet.
I was thinking, how tall is that building? Is that only one story then?
No, that's a three-story building.
No, I'm sorry, the bank, the credit union, just the one story, okay, that's okay.
And their building's actually...
I think I'm envisioning it the way it was originally designed, which was for two stories, yeah, okay. All right, I just was wanting to make sure that somebody had looked at it from that perspective, seated in a car, that it wasn't so high that you wouldn't really see it that well. So this is going to be used for commercial advertising purposes?
It'll be used for tenants in our building...
As well as your purposes.
And also for...
Are there any billboard regulations that have to be observed related to the positioning of that?
Well, what, what, I think what specifically the issue is, that Brian's trying to change is that...
I'm asking state, not necessarily ours, but ours and state.
In regards to the state, if you don't mind, the state has, I forget the terminology for it, but it's, it's a right-of-way...
Cotton laws?
Yeah, and I've talked to, I've talked to the individual that once I'm approved here, I go and submit the application, pay a fee for that. Also, the sign company is currently also working with the same individual from the state that I'm working with, because they've put up several signs throughout West Virginia, especially in our region, so they're dealing with the same people, and they're actually looking at getting the permits for Nutter Fort if we move in, to doing it down there.
Any other comments or questions or concerns?
Were you ready to say, Martin, that maybe you have some changes to consider?
Well, no, we're going back to the sign board, so the one, you'll get that, so I mean, 1335, that's the entire section of 1335 that deals with signage. And a lot of the issues right now, I think what we're doing is permanent advertising and things such as that, what he's proposing to do on the digital sign would be considered permanent off-site advertising. So right now, that's prohibited. So if you're McDonald's, you cannot advertise up there on that building, that's off-site advertising. So that, that's one thing I think he wants changed to allow that.
Aren't, just to use your example, aren't they on Tim Genalotis, Genalosis?
Well, yeah, but I mean, I can't tell you the history of that.
Okay. I just, you have to mention McDonald's, but wait a minute, I've seen a McDonald's sign on...
So I can't tell you the history of that one. So I mean, so when you review this one, this ordinance, so what code was going several months ago, was going through here, trying to clean up and clarify because of the times of digital advertising, things of that nature, we want to make sure that we stay consistent with our, with our ordinances for off-site advertising, some of the signs we have now. Even the most recent signs solve the, what do you call that, the gospel of life or the flyers that were everywhere in town. Those are prohibited, but what we want to do is cross-reference that in section 1335 as well. We clarified it in here, you cannot have pole, you can't attach things to poles on other per utilities, but even in other codes and sections, but is also being stressed in here. But to go in the square footage where Brian was talking about 1335A4 sized from 25 square feet to 32 square feet, so he wants to include that size of signage that is allowed now to increase that sign capacity, to make it larger. Then there's also in here, what percentage of a building can be covered by a sign? So I mean, those types of things, when you, when we, if we consider changing these, it's going to result all the way through that ordinance to where you're opening it up to any type of building, how big that sign could be based upon the percentage that could be covered on that building. So the red line version here, we'll go through that, I mean, if you want to go through it, we can have another work session later to get in depth with this. I didn't have a chance to hand this out to you in your package, so...
What is the percentage? Do you know what that is?
Uh, I'll talk me out of it.
Is it in here somewhere?
Yeah. But there is a...
I mean, if, to me, if that's the guideline, that it's within a certain percent, then, then as long as it falls under that guideline, then it doesn't really matter what size it is.
Yeah, but right, and then digital signs right now are not, from my understanding, is not, in this current ordinance, to what Brian's describing, would not be permissible as well, attached, affixed to the building. But also in here, like just, just to give you an idea of setbacks, freestanding signs, maximum sign height's five feet, signs will be set back five feet. What we're proposing is moving back to 10 feet, so it's not as close to the roadway. DOH would also have, you know, if it's on Main or Pike, DOH would also have to agree to that. Not to the 10 feet, but regardless of what sign goes there, even if it's, if it's not permissible, or if it falls within our guidelines of 10 feet, they ultimately still have to approve it on Main and Pike by the DOH. But what I would do is recommend you go through here, read these, and then we can come back in a little future work session, I can have Adam or somebody else here to kind of go through these a little bit more in depth as well. But I, I think this will give you a better understanding of what he wants to do based upon the ordinance I hand down.
His changes are not marked?
No, his are not. So you have to go to 1335A2 and then see where he's saying prohibited to approve by appropriate governing body.
Okay.
I'm not quite, I think he left it.
Or he went to get a picture of the sign.
So on this one, I'm not quite sure what he's even requesting, but if included, the measure would be in effect, I think what he's saying is, you wouldn't have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission or BZA, which to me, that, that, that wouldn't be wise to do. I think we, if anything we want to do to change this, I think P&amp;Z or BZA should be involved, for variances or anything such as that, or if there's an exception being made to these, I think the P&amp;Z should have input on that as well.
Well, and just to add to that, I don't know if this is part of that, but you know the Progressive Women's Association are in the process of doing some sort of digital signage?
Yes.
So we probably need to make sure that everybody's on the same page, because once we start this, then we've got to live with it.
Absolutely.
So we want to make sure we do it right the first time and...
And they would find, that one would fall on 1335A04, they would be under there. That's on, affixed to the building, that's on a pole, because right now setbacks five feet versus, now if they did it now, I mean, as long as they followed the code, they would fall within those guidelines.
So they're under O4?
I believe that's where it is. And then if, if we increased it to 10 prior to them doing it, then they would have to move that to 10 feet back, setback instead of five. But I mean, you know, we're not asking to approve these next week, obviously we want to have a more in-depth work session, because these have a lot more changes to them and effect, true effect.
So are you saying that right now, we really don't allow digital signs per se that have moving parts?
Well, we do, but I think what it is, is based upon the square footage of 25 square feet, not, not the 32 square feet, and which is being requested by Mr. Payne.
20 square.
25, I would say.
25 versus 32.
Yeah.
And that change is not noted in here yet?
No, none of them are.
Yeah, I was just looking at 1335O4, item four, and I didn't go back all the way, it was just such a sign, so not be eliminated, flashing, contain moving parts, or be changeable.
Right. And then the, and then ultimately, what's coming back to as well, is if, what he's saying is using it for advertising, then now you want the off-site advertising within this code, so I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to this, so I'd say, once you change these, it's going to other codes as well.
Is it, what would be the exception for the sign at the Eagles? Isn't that a digital sign with moving parts? It's not real big, but it's an illuminated...
Well, same church, right.
I'm sorry.
The church, down there in the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, in the, in the...
Consignment shop.
Well, the tele, is it the telephone company, credit union, or what's the credit union behind?
Yes. CNN, that one's not a fixed, it's off, it's off the building, so it's setback five feet.
Okay, you're right.
Okay, I'll tell you.
Yeah, but the Eagles, like, so that one falls within the 25 square foot rule, not the 32 imposed. So, I mean, those are the, those are the differences as we go forward. I mean, I think this is going to take a lot more matching, his changes up in here to what, what, what that causes us versus what we're probably going to request for changes as well. But regardless, it's going to go back to off-site advertising as well, you know, does council want to change that policy or that set forth, or, you know, what do we want to do to that? Because that will, you know, then, what else does that do to all the other property owners? Do you end up with digital signs on every building?
Off-site advertising on a building, is that the concern? I mean, we have billboards downtown.
But that's under the billboard ordinance.
Okay, all right, that's, so it has to do with the fact that it's on a building or...
Yes.
On a building's property, okay.
Yeah. But I, I would recommend reading this with the changes, and I think we can just come back to another work session, maybe next month, and discuss that more, more in depth with these changes. Then maybe we can try to incorporate his and another caller, just so you can see what they do throughout that ordinance as well. So, the next one is the Big 12 Kerry sign. So this one, the mayor was discussing with myself, and also signs up, we were discussing to do something to this side of the parking, Hughes Parking Building off of Third Street as you're going on to...
50.
50. So we would take down the Pace, the Pace signs that's been up there since the early nineties.
Percy Ashcraft days.
Percy Ashcraft days, and then put a new sign up for, thanks for visiting Clarksville, and then that one as well, we say, home of Mike Carey, WVU, women's basketball, Big 12, 2014, 2017. And then that's what it would look like, where, actually, this one's the correct, that's in there. But the total cost of that's turn keys, $6,000, and that's for signs up going in, removing the existing sign, purchasing material for the new sign, fabricating it, and installing the new sign in that place. That's kind of the gist of it. But it would give that side of the parking building a little facelift on that side as you're exiting onto 50. Don't have any questions on that?
This is exactly where the Pace sign is now.
Yes.
Yes. Which needs to come down regardless.
Yeah, they're pretty...
And there's one on the other side too, once you're in a 50 west.
We need to take it down as well.
Yeah, but nothing be put in the likes of that one, that'd be left blank.
Yeah, it's fine on a little jalapeno. Positive attitude.
So anybody have any concerns about that?
Hey, Martin?
Yes?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we going to start honoring everybody that, that win a championship instead of like a national title?
Well, if they're born and raised in Clarksville, I think we should.
Okay, so what's that do to the Kirsten Wyatt sign then? Because I've had people say to me, why, you know, why, why it didn't Kirsten Wyatt get a large sign like Chipper Fisher, you know, I just kind of said, she wins an Emmy or a Tony, we'd be more happy if it went up.
Well, actually, the sign that we put up for Kirsten Wyatt was at their request, and that's what they requested, was that particular sign to go on the, what do you call that?
Top of Club Hill, City Sign Rack.
I mean, that's what they requested.
Okay, I mean, I, you know, don't get me wrong, I've known Mike Carey, you know, most of my life, and he's a great guy, and so, I'm just asking, you know...
Well, I think we should honor anybody that, that gets national attention or recognition.
That's called national attention.
You want me to run across the United States?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Very good. He said the Pace sign has to come down.
Pace, it's coming down.
There you go.
Anything else from that one? Or if not, we'll move on to the next one.
And Brian dropped off a picture of what the two...
Digital soundboard.
And we'll go ahead and include this with our review of the proposed changes versus the changes that the city's making to the ordinance.
And another thing too, of course, those are not the scale, but we just assume the proposed is a digital plot is...
Okay, thank you.
The next one in your package was that statue that celebrates diversity statue, and this one, just kind of give you an update, this, this is being spearheaded by Clarksville Uptown as well as the mayor. The description's in there, it's a limited edition set of four bronze children sculptures representing different ethnicities. So right now, it's only one in the United States, I believe this is correct, and this would be the second one on the limited edition. So this one would be a cast bronze, limited edition, each child weighs about 50 pounds. The bronze statues, they're anchored in, by bolts into concrete, and they would be situated along Pike Street near the library. The total cost was, for all these, were $30,000. Kathy had spoken multiple times to Mr. Rose, who owns the business, he's selling it actually for $14,000 to produce this next one. Clarksville Uptown, Kathy's assistant has raised two dates.
Almost $11,000.
Almost $11,000 in two days.
And I'm waiting on return calls, so I, as far, I'm confident that we'll get paid for, just through, people within the community heard about the statue, you know, anytime it involves children, and it's called celebrating diversity, which in light of everything that's going on around the country, I can't imagine it being a better time. So, I mean, people actually called me to contribute, and like I said, right now, I'm at $10,700, and I'm waiting on two return phone calls, so I feel confident we'll raise the $14,000. And, you know, initially, you know, I approached Martin about possibly having the city help fund it, but if the pace we're going, you know, perhaps we could look at a follow-up statue in conjunction with this, because if we're going to raise the $14,000, then the city doesn't need to contribute any money towards it. But it would be nice if the city was involved, because they are going to do like a little commemorative plaque for all those that contributed to the statue. And, you know, it's a significance, it's 48 feet long, you know, with the four children, so it's going to make a statement. But again, you know, like I said, I'm just kind of making you aware of what it is that we're doing, and that we really don't anticipate the need for any money, but it would be nice if the city was somewhat involved.
Martin, the $30,000 was the original supposed cost that's being discounted to the $14,000? Wow.
Yeah, I went after library credits, because I said it's going to be on the library grounds, can we get a library credit? And they said, oh, yeah, that qualifies. I said, well, we're a municipal government, can we get a municipal credit? And they said, oh, that qualifies. And then they were having a 20% off sale, and I said, well, we need the 20% off. And then I said, what about our senior discount? I'm a senior. I mean, I went after everything.
Can I look for any coupons anywhere that come off you?
And then I said, oh, by the way, the delivery price needs to be included. I said, so, you know, can you roll that in so that...
What kind of timeline? What kind of timeline on this?
You need to get a discount too.
Yeah, I mean, I was going after everything, because I wanted the statue.
The Uptown's cut the check, $7,000, and mailed it out today, so once, so I believe he's going to start a production, we emailed him and said, we're taking it under Uptown. I don't know what the term...
They said, once they, once they get the check, then they'll put it, they'll schedule for production, and he anticipates the end of December, 1st of January, so it takes a couple of months.
I just want to make sure I heard right then, so it's not the 30 I'm looking at?
That was, if you went on their website and bought it today, it'd be $30,000.
But it's for, for this project, it's 14, based on what you've negotiated.
Right.
Do we have any kind of a strategy or long-term game plan related to statuary signage? We've got a couple of murals now, should we be thinking in terms of kind of coordinating the look of our city like you would do if it was your, your home and you were decorating it?
Well, actually, Clarksville Uptown is, that's kind of like their undertaking, they want to be involved, and so we're working with signage and murals and plantings and statues and, and, and of course, you know, they welcome any input from the city, and of course, Martin and I serve on the board, so we kind of represent the city's perspective in addition to the business owners, which comprise the Clarksville Uptown.
I just think we should, yeah, some of Martin, if you don't get too whacked out here, as far as the variety of things we're adding to our community.
Do you have a quick question?
Oh, it's not a question, Madam Mayor. The, in regards to raising all the funds, and if what the city could possibly do, I'm currently president of trustees of the library, if the site preparation is definitely some necessity there, and we've been working on some site work there for the front library as well as the back of the library, but we could definitely use, utilize some help from the city in regards to the site preparation and the beautification of the front area there. So whatever you could do in that regards. And in regards to council imbalance comments, one of the things too, that I think a lot of the community took pride in was the fountain down here at the Chase Bank property drive-through, which is now closed, and the fountain hasn't been utilized for say, two years now, that might be something to consider as well, if the city would want to undertake. That's my two cents.
Martin, what about, this is just a suggestion, could we go ahead and put something on the agenda to basically support this, and then make any contribution of the city contingent on any shortfall that they would have, we'd be covered?
Yeah.
In other words, we're not going to appropriate an amount of money, but we'll, you know, if we had to put in 2,000, but I think that would be, and that could cover us for, you know, these statues or whatever, if that's, just an idea.
That's good.
And that would cover if we have any cost that we have to come up with, recite prep or whatever, you know. Just want to make sure we be covered, that way no one can question, you know, that money's not appropriated.
Speaking of kind of coordinating murals and statues and stuff like that, there have been, I have heard some people started to refer to the bear that's, that's on that one mural as the Clarksville Bear. I've heard multiple people say that, and that may, it's kind of, it's kind of getting unofficially named, so I don't know if that's something that we want to work in in future things as well, kind of have this one symbol that kind of goes across multiple things. Just throw that idea out there since we're discussing. People like the bear.
All right, anything else regarding that?
If you don't mind, maybe we'll just go ahead and jump up, Mr. Raman is here, we'll go ahead and get that one out of discussion. Discussing the youth sports, uh, I don't know if you're almost locked on, since you walked in, but...
Please don't check.
I know, I know you have a lot to do this.
I just left four holes long.
You may not get you back in time.
Yeah, I had to note the name for it, and I love it, it's a good start, to be here and enjoy this. Are we ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, thank you for having me. I guess this is kind of an informal session as compared to last few times that I've been up here, uh, seeking money for the youth, uh, sports in our area. Uh, most of you know me, but you also know that I'm the president of Pony League Baseball, and we're housed in Harrison County, we have all Harrison County children. We have four hundred, approximately four hundred and sixty kids in our league, uh, this year, because we took on girls softball, because it folded pretty much, uh, over at Summer Park. And, uh, what, what I'm here to talk to you about tonight is really, we have a, a great opportunity, and I brought some paperwork with me, I'll leave it with you, you guys can look at it, but, uh, we did a couple of big tournaments, and I, I know Ryan was probably privileged to be out there. We had a twenty-five team tournament this past summer, and about an eighteen-team tournament, and I have the numbers to back this up. For every twenty-five, and we had peak teams from Tampa Bay, Florida, we had teams from State College, Pennsylvania, a lot of Northern Virginia and Southwestern PA teams. For every twenty-five-team tournament, uh, the league that helps us put this on is called Tournament Time, they can show direct, uh, revenue of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's hotel stays for two to three nights, cause you can multiply it out if you want to. It's fifteen kids on a team, twenty-five teams, how many rooms that is, restaurant spending, uh, you know, things of that nature for two to three nights. Now, not everybody stays the full three nights, some people lose and go home, but everybody's there for at least two nights, because it's a double elimination. But, you know, Bridgeport's getting ready to build a thirty-five million dollar complex, and I know we can't do that, uh, for whatever the reasons, that's, that's the way it is, but they're gonna get the brunt of this money, this hotel money, and we have, what, three hotels in the city? We can get a good percentage of that. When we do these tournaments, and I talk to the park board, uh, you know, if we put it on our website, hey, look, these are, draw a little map, interactive map, these are three hotels, here's Norwood Park where you're playing, you can show them, if you come out the back way of Walmart right there, right in Stonewood, to the park, how to get back to our restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. I think we could get at least thirty-five, forty percent, especially with the restaurants we have. But with that said, uh, we wanna turf Frank Loria Field. It's, it's a disaster, uh, you can ask your own park board, it's a disaster. We had more rainouts than we had games. I've gotten bids on it from the company called AstroTurf, the original company that turfed the Houston Astrodome in nineteen sixty-eight, uh, and I'd like to see the city to help out, participate with the park board and some private money that, that we're getting raised. I think if we do that in conjunction with the batting facility, they should be finished, uh, sometime this winter. I think it'll be a very, I think we could have tournaments every weekend there, bottom line. Bottom line, we could have tournaments every weekend, filling that park up, trying to direct as many people as we can to the local businesses, and you're doing a good thing for the children, our community. It, it's just unplayable, and I know you guys aren't baseball people and you don't have young kids, it's just unplayable. I'm telling you, and if you don't believe me, call the park board, ask them. They spend approximately twenty-some grand a year in man-hours and material to keep that, that, just that field, just that field going, that's about their budget. We can, we can do it, it'll pay for itself in ten, twelve years.
John, what is the estimate?
For?
For the Loria Field?
Uh, infield is, uh, now, we're gonna do a lot of the work ourselves. We do what we have to do on the infield, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Turf base paths too?
Yes, sir, whole thing, infield, outfield, everything.
Like the field and more tail?
Correct.
The whole thing is one eighteen.
Correct.
Yeah.
We'll be able to get Black Bear come down here and do some exhibition games, probably play a couple of games.
How much have you raised so far?
Uh, well, I've been talking with the park board, and, and we've got at least fifty thousand. And I, I'm actually getting ready to talk to the county commission also. I think the city, in my opinion, should be willing to at least come in and help and do something. You all figure out what you wanna do, and then I'm gonna shift gears on you. I'd like to see, I feel good, AstroTurf, and I do have about three hundred thousand raised there, private money. But again, it's in the middle of the city, and I think if we do these things along with that batting facility, guys, I think we've got some synergy going, where I guarantee you, you're gonna have this place full of children, all three of them, whether it's soccer, baseball, football, at a very minimal investment. And we're not even talking about the upside of having these children being under adult supervision off the streets and not fooling around where they should not be fooling around. And, uh, I've got three hundred grand already in the bank for Height Field.
What do you think the approximate cost would be for all Height Field?
Height Field, uh, five fifty. And a chunk of that's gonna come from the school board, but I wanna see the city to be part of it. Yeah, if we, we can start doing this, and I know we're doing a great job already with, uh, with Robinson Grand, that's gonna be a Shaw yard. We can revitalize this one step at a time, the very middle, because you've got private money helping you a lot on all this, and that, that's a big plus. And then if you look at the upside of, if we can keep five percent of these kids off of crime and drugs, what's that worth to them? But I'm here to help any way I can on all three of these projects. The, the batting cages are done deal, I'm waiting on a guy to come erect the steel. It's kinda hard when you got guys that are donating their time almost next to another. It's hard for me to crack the whip and say, come on, guy, get out there and do it. But I've talked to everybody, and we're moving ahead. Um, I'm sorry, Gary.
Am I wrong, didn't, um, Robert C. Byrd use a local company for their, to provide the, the turf for their field and track?
No.
No.
That, that was urethane, that's polyurethane, but they, they provide the pedals, the product, but it goes, but there's a local supplier to the turf company.
Oh, okay, that's how it works, I knew there was some local connection.
Same guy did Byrd Football and Bridgeport and Football and Robert, uh, their football fields is doing this. It's called progress. It's called progress.
I'm talking about the, the product, not the contractor necessarily.
Well, they do it.
So for both projects, you're needing around three hundred and eighteen thousand?
Yes, sir.
Is the school, what's the school board said about, uh, their support in Height Field as far as that?
He's, he's all in, man. He's already paid forty thousand for an engineering study. They're gonna tear the barn down, replace all the bleachers, keep the bowl, redo the press box, and then we're gonna come up with...
That's the, that's included in the five fifty?
No, no, that's just turf.
Just turf.
That's what they're gonna do. It's gonna be a, a new, new stadium, basically.
It's pretty impressive you already have half, the money basically already raised.
We got a good chunk of it, we're, we're well on the whole thing, that, that, Robert C. Byrd, probably one point one, I think, was on the engineering report, so we've got three hundred in the bank. You know, whatever you guys can help out with is, is a big help, and it shows, and I'm also going to the county commission for a little help on that too. I think if we work together, all of us, we can do this. It, it's really too big for any one entity to do, but if everybody pitches in a little bit, and we can have a conduit to put it all together, you know, then we have, we have something to go with it. And, uh, I just, I know Chief would love to have these kids off the street. And under the tutelage of Wes Brown and Josh Gorel and Sammy Alvaro, and guys who've given their life, just like when we were young, Frank, and Marshall, to the Jo, Jo Remas and Pudge Brown, we gotta get back to that, because we're getting away from that. And, uh, we're losing generations of kids, I see it every day. I see good kids that I had at Pony League starting out, I kinda lost track of them, and I'll go back, hey, where are they? Well, mom and dad got divorced, dad's in jail, you know, they're, the kid's in trouble, he's out, out of school, he's at Tech Center, and, you know, it's just, it's a shame, we don't have to allow that to happen. And, and only we can change it.
Martin, even if, even if we wanted to consider this, we have to have an intergovernmental agreement with the Harrison County School Board, because that's, you know, we can't go on to, or just not city property where, you know, we control it. We'd have to do an agreement with the school board, and it had, all this stuff would have to be outlined, just something.
And I think the county commission should be part of it.
It should be a three-party agreement, yes.
Yes.
Yes, I mean, at some point down the road, that's something we need to keep in mind.
What does that entail?
Ordinance of city council.
Really, that, that, that overall plan that you described, then, then that, that would all be spelled out in, and what's gonna be done, and then the funding mechanisms from each participant in that intergovernmental agreement would then execute that by the governing bodies, or authorized myself, or the president, county commissioner, and then board of every sign. Then nobody's then in agreement to it, those funds can be utilized to go forth with that project.
I, you know, and I, I apologize.
And the private funding.
I can bring the blueprints in that the engineers did, I can show you all of it at Height Field, and I can, I should've brought the, uh, I got it on my phone, but that'd help you, the estimates of the turf at Loria. But, uh, I've been over this with, uh, Mr. Angelio and Mr. Cooper, or Peter, cause I think they had it actually.
Does the county, is the county aware of any of this that's going on?
Uh, I've spoken with Commissioner Fazini and Mr. Watson, and they're very open to the idea.
It'd be nice if they publicly came out in support of it, not only just the project, but also, you know, with, with some dollars, and say, you know, then at least that would, you know, and for us to, I think for us to take the lead on these things, and then the county doesn't come up with anything, and they just say, well, you know, we're for it. I think we need to, you know, get down to nitty-gritty and start talking, you know, dollars, if, if we even wanna think about doing it. And I'm just saying that, because the county, you know, I haven't seen, and I know that John works hard working, I mean, I know John, he, I know how many times you've talked to him and so on, so...
I, I think we can get it done as, as long as, I mean, I look at this room, I mean, we all grew up there, so are them down. And if we put our minds to it, we can make it happen, and same way with the county commission. And like I said, you've got private quasi-government helping out to a degree, there's no reason why we can't, uh, can't make something. It would be something that would be generational, that would transform not only athletics, but the interaction of young school-aged children with programs that can be run at these locations. And, uh, I know I'm excited about it, a lot of people are excited about it, but you guys got any questions? I can certainly get those blueprints up and, uh, show you, but I was astounded, and Ryan, you can attest, how many teams traveled from over three hundred miles to come to this travel baseball? I mean, I was actually shocked.
A lot of people there, a lot of people.
It, it was crazy. I mean, we were doing, when I tell you we were doing a couple thousand a day at a concession stand, that is absolutely crazy. Selling bubble gum, cold pop and shaved ice and, so I mean, there, there's something there, and that's why, believe me when I tell you, Bridgeport's doing what they're doing. They've got four indoor volleyball courts, four indoor basketball courts, a indoor facility like you all are constructing out of the park. So I mean, there's money in this, and it's not just about the money, but that helps feed the bulldog that looks over the flock. If you're the shepherd, it helps the shepherd, you know, look over the flock with the, with the money it generates. So if you have any questions, you guys let me know. If you wanna see anything in particular, please let me know, but, uh, we would like, everything's in place. So Frank, if you have a suggestion about a spearhead it and start a movement, you let me know, and, and I will do everything I can to, to help.
John, I would suggest that maybe yourself, Cooper, Dr. Manson, whomever from the, represent the county, and myself, maybe just get a meeting and, and to review the plans, and, and maybe formulate something so we can bring it back to another work session, to, and then at that point in time, then, then I think council decides they wanna move forward with it, they put it on, you know, decide they wanna put it on the agenda, but if, if, if...
That's fine.
How would that equal, five of us to get together and?
Be no problem.
Put the plan together, and, and then that way we'll make sure the county commission's on board with it as well, then we'll know, I think, from our standpoint, fiscally, what they'll be responsible for than us, and we put that into the agreement, then I think it'll lay, help us lay out a plan, hey, how we wanna fund it, you know, if, if council wishes to move forward with that, or how the park board contributes, or however that works.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and we'll do the intergovernmental agreement as a draft, so everybody has a chance to put a fresh set of eyes on it.
See, the thing that, uh, and I know that, like I said, John's been to the park board, and of course, you know, I'm the rep on park board, some of the things that feedback the park board's getting is that Height Field's in the middle of the city of Clarksville, but Loria Field's in other four, okay, so, you know, right in the middle of the cities. So, you know, I mean, Height Field, to me, sounds, uh, for this body, sounds a little bit more palatable than, even though that's the bigger project, but it's right in the middle of town, you know what I mean, so, but that's just something to think about.
Yeah, I like that idea, and then that way we know what we're looking at, instead of everybody guessing, well, let's do this much, let's do this much.
I think Martin's idea...
How much are they doing?
Yeah, I think Martin, you know, they need to get together and just start fashioning.
Have a meeting, do a draft.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Our proposed drug house ordinance, should have a copy of that as well, as well. We'll pass around two, two, two more press releases that were also sent out, these are from Martinsburg, September sixth, September tenth. They've now utilized the ordinance, uh, that this is quasi-tailored after, um, four or five times with the property owners to abate, um, drug issues. And mainly what's happened is, we're gonna be working with the property owners, period. So, I mean, when we, when we receive a complaint for a drug issue in, in a house, ours is the chief of police, we'll, we'll contact, uh, that owner, tell them that, make them aware that there is an issue, we want to abate it. If they fail to go through the process to abate it, or, or work with us on that, then they receive a fine. The fines are typically forgiven if, if the, um, if the nuisance is abated, and people that are of the issue are taken care of and evicted. From the city's standpoint, all we're trying to do is be an advocate and assist the property owner to get the situation resolved, and to get the, the person, uh, abated out, out of the, and evicted from, from that rental unit or, um, whatever it may be. But overall, that, that's kind of a synopsis of what this is, uh, would do, but if we wanna go through it, um, the pose, the, the purpose of it is kind of that, it'll identify all properties being offered for rent, but that'll enable code, the code office as well as the police department to be more efficient in identifying the problem areas and the illicit activities. So, the standards will relate to the condition, maintenance, illegal activities, occupancy of rental dwelling units, that are intended to ensure life and health, safety, sanitation, lawful conduct in the rental units. This is also be under the scope, be all rental units, residential and commercial within corporate city limits, but also owner occupied. So, we're not leaving the owner occupied out of that, it's all, all residential units that would be affected with this ordinance. So again, the, the reason why we're bringing code into this as well is because if a complaint does come to the, uh, police department, typically if the police department calls the code office to find out whom either resides there, who owns it, so we need to make sure that the information is, is there for both departments to be able to exchange information freely, um, as well. Flip on to the third page, um, this one would be, any premise used for illicit activity as defined herein is hereby declared a public nuisance, and a nuisance shall be deemed to exist when? The property is used for two or more illicit activities or incidents within a twelve-month period. So anytime within that twelve-month period, if we receive that, that, that then considered a public nuisance, and then we'll proceed forward under, under these guidelines. Second, the offense for which the property is used is punishable by imprisonment for one or more years as determined by a court of competent jurisdiction. So again, we, this does take the efforts of law enforcement, working with, uh, code, vice versa, exchanging the information. So again, we, this does take the efforts of law enforcement, working with the code, vice versa, exchanging the information back and forth, and then working with the property owner to get them abated. Again, if they're not doing it, we're gonna cite the property owner, but also go after criminal activities to the tenant as well. Inspections due to illicit activity, whenever two or more residents make a complaint that the public nuisance or the illicit activity does exist, or has existed within the city, the chief or the city official whom I would designate shall begin the inspection or cause the premises to be inspected. So if we receive two, two complaints on a, an occupied dwelling, then we'll, we'll begin to investigate on those per this ordinance. Again, if the owner fails or refuses to consent to and arrange for an inspection, we can seek administrative search warrants from, from, sit in the municipal court and we'll also provide notice to the owner regarding the inspections that will take place. And obviously, they can be present for those inspections as well, which we would encourage them to. But the end of the day, the result we want is the abatement within those dwellings unoccupied or the occupied dwellings. So the order of abatement, the chief of police, who represented the city, will bring action to abate the illicit activity and to be commenced in the name of the city from a court, which would be the municipal court, by Judge Martin, and hereby conferred such authority hereunder in the form of notice of violation or citation. So we can issue that citation directly from the chief of police, or any representative designated by the chief. Again, that's the tool we wanna use to get their attention. But if the landlord or the property owner is working with us, obviously, we will drop those charges against them just to resolve the issue and hopefully they don't go back to running to the same person or anybody else who might be dealing with the illicit, illicit activity within these dwellings. The certificate of use and occupancy, it goes in there kind of explaining what that is again, within, within the code now. It's kind of mirrored in here as well, all the pertinent information that we wanna be brought on. So we have the correct information in our database. It's typical information, but square footage of the place, number of stories, rooms rentals, if there's a basement, things of that we know of nature, just for security reasons, also for the, for the police department. So when they're dealing with the units, they know what they're getting into as well, and things such as that. But this would be, require property registration. And this would allow all of the property to be registered within 90 days of enacting of this ordinance. And then all the registration would take place within the code office, where they would have the information to exchange the information with the police department. If you fail to register the property within the 90 days, at that point in time, administrative fee would be assessed to the property owner, and that amount was $200. On this one, the fees and conditions on this one, under this provision of the ordinance, there'll be no fee charge for initial compliance inspection. But what we wanna do is be able, be able to go into an inspection program with this as well. And, and it would be about a two-year inspection program. So we estimate it would take two years to implement an inspection program to go through all the rental units. Right now, if you have a CO, it's the property owner's responsibility if they, if somebody moves out and somebody new moves in, that they do contact the code office to receive a new CO. With this, bringing in the other ordinance is helping them to evict somebody. We don't want them to have to go through that process continually. But what we recommend is we'd only go back once every two years through the special rental process. It'd take us two years to go through all of them. But those would be $20 per inspection for the rental units and $50 for the commercial units as well for the COs going through the inspection process. That's a gist of, of pretty much what, what, what it all entail. I mean, we're in here, which you have, hope you have the opportunity to read it if you have any questions. But this would actually implement and kind of mesh a rental inspection program as well as the abatement of the nuisance for the drug house ordinance as well. Because a lot of the information that's gonna be needed, we're gonna have to know upfront as well. So we really think it's a good fit to mesh two of these types of programs together to where the information can, can be brought in and then dispersed and disseminated through the various departments that are needed to enforce it as well, from the police department to the municipal judge to the code office.
Martin, do, do we have enough manpower to do this? Does this require any additional staffing?
We have a vacancy now, but we never, backfilled. But one, one, one person within, within the code would be designated to, to this program that would take the two-year cycle to go through those. But on, on the other, I mean, from the police department's side, we're getting the calls now, but I think this would give us the, the, kind of more of the teeth into it to actually go in and try to abate the nuisance, bring the, the property owner in, have a discussion with that property owner to, to take the proper necessary steps to abate the problem. Then if they don't, then they'll be fined as well. Then if they do take the proper steps, proper steps, we'll rescind the fine that's provided to them administratively.
Martin, two, two questions I had. It says the initial inspection, there'll be no, no fee?
No fee.
Now, we have a, we have, right now for CO, we have a fee now. That will go away for the, when somebody gets a CO now?
Under the initial inspection, so yes. So once we begin the inspection process with the property that's going through, that first inspection, there'll be no initial fee to them. Then every inspection thereafter, every, approximately every two years, when we go back to that unit, it's $20. If it's commercial, it's $50.
So, right, so then under this ordinance, under the initial, there will be no fee?
Correct.
Okay. The second thing I had, and I don't know, under the definitions, what defines what a property owner is, obviously, you know, the deed of record. But I don't know whether, since you were city manager, what, but we got into a situation with a fire service fee ordinance with land contracts. And, you know, we, what we did was, we put some language in that definition about land contracts, some of which are recorded and some aren't. And then what we do is we make the property owner or, and/or the person that's, that's, that's buying under a land contract to provide a copy of it. You know, and you might wanna put something in there just because it's, since you're getting into this abatement. If you got into court, there might be something in that land contract that the other attorney might use against us. So I think we ought to put something in there and just say that whether we discount it or make them provide a copy to code, but I think those land contracts, they, they're a real problem for, for finances.
You're right. That's a good point.
So, I mean, you can look, the fire service fee, and there's, there's a sentence in there that the attorney put in there that probably needs to be tweaked, but that might be something we might wanna add into it. That's the only two questions I had.
Yeah, I, I saw in the, the ordinance where it also allows the property owner to, at their option, to use a, a private inspection agency in lieu of the, the city inspector. I read that on, it's at the bottom of 1767.08.
The bottom?
Yeah, we're under G, the unnumbered paragraph, the unlettered or numbered paragraph of the G, right above, .09.
Yes, that's under the failure to comply, correct?
Okay.
Yeah. See?
Yeah, that, that's under, yeah, that's, yeah, there's failure to comply and then there's, yeah, there's another paragraph below that.
Oh, the exception.
It says exception. And it seems, it seems to me, reading that, that paragraph, that it, it kind of says, okay, you can do this whole inspection thing we just laid out, or you can go get a guy that's licensed to do these inspections privately and, and turn in a certificate and that's sufficient.
And register and approve both.
The code has to review that, that guy's report, though.
Correct.
Now, if the city does the inspection, there's no fee, but if they go out and get initially?
Initially, then after it's 20, then it's $20.
Right. But then if they go out, I would imagine it's gonna be more than $20 to get somebody to come in and inspect your property.
I don't know if they, but if they have that right, but it wouldn't be free if they got a problem.
No, what I'm, what I'm thinking
But you give me the option.
Yeah, what, what I'm thinking is that, you know, if I was somebody who had a property and I didn't necessarily want the city to inspect it for one reason or another, maybe for a nefarious reason, there, there, you know, there, there could be, I, I guess I'm, I'm seeing a loophole in this that could, that somebody could abuse, is what I'm saying, is, you know, you could get somebody who's a, who's a registered inspector, who's, who's gone through whatever the steps are to get that certificate, but, but could be kind of not the most honest person in the world.
Well, but they have to be registered with the city, so I mean, we would have to do our due diligence.
They have to submit it to code, and if it's not a good report, the code's gonna say, you, you gotta be redone or, well.
I mean, really, ideally, that would be the best-case scenario, everybody go out and get their own inspector. Then that frees up our city code inspectors.
Well, I, I guess, like I said, I just had a, a concern there just because, you know, if our intent is we wanna make sure these things are being inspected and they're, the code and all this stuff, if, if you have somebody who's paying the guy that's doing the inspection, that can color the inspector's perception.
That's a good point.
Yeah, but that's where we need to do our due diligence and make sure whoever we get on there is, you know, on the inspection list, you know, is qualified then.
Plus, that should, that should throw a red flag to the chief.
What's that?
That should throw a red flag to the chief to look into that, to see why he's doing a, another inspection other than going through the city.
Yeah, and then still neighbors are gonna call in if there's any activity. I mean, it takes two, two complaints and then surveillance will show if there's anything still continuing there.
And the remedy, and the remedy may be just that, is us, is that we, the city be aware that the issue could arise so that when licensing these people, that you kind of keep an eye on it, you know? I just, you know, that was, that was just something that jumped out at me when I was reading, so.
Do you have any other?
I, I don't understand how owner occupied would work. What happens to the property if we are able to evict the owner of the property?
Well, owner occupied, you, you, your son could be a, an issue doing illicit activities. And then if you're not, if you're not taking the proper steps to, to resolve that issue, we're coming after you. You're the parent also.
Okay, I, I was thinking, evicting the owner.
No, we, we, we gotta get to, you got a problem in there.
I, I see what you're saying now, that, okay, if it's a problem with someone living there. Because I, you, you can't evict the owner of the property, can you?
But the owner can abate the issue.
Uh, yeah, I see, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're defining owner occupied to include people that are related to you, that, that are there, even if you're not there. Still owner occupied.
We, we run into a lot, through the city, where there's owner occupied, I'm gonna say a lot, owner occupied dwellings that you may be the owner, but you don't live there. But, but, I mean, it, it could be a relative of yours that's living there that, that are issues. I mean, we run into those.
That's considered owner occupied?
It's, yeah, I mean, they, they probably don't charge a rent or nothing, they, the owner. Something that happens, where it's owner occupied, the person says it's their property and it's, they don't rent it, they don't do anything to it. But it's, it's, it's a nuisance and it's illicit activity that may occur. So, I mean, those, I think we need to, so I don't know if that fully addresses that, but I think it, to, to your question, I think if there's a member of your household in there and you're turning a blind eye to it, you should be held responsible as well, I think, because you're, you're, you're still having a negative impact to your, to your neighbors as well. Trying to come after you as the property owner. I think it's more fair that way as well across the board, so we're not doing this one after.
If I rented it, there's no insurance, when I have a record, it'll come after you, not me.
Right.
Well, I'll give a tick, but you're still gonna be liable because it's in your name.
Check me down.
Martin, can I ask a question? Any ordinance came from what city?
Well, we, we, the, the original one came from Martinsburg, city of Martinsburg. Then since then, Elkins, Huntington, one more. I think it's put drug house ordinances into effect.
And they've enforced it, it's been helped.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just said that.
They've enforced it, it's been helped.
Martinsburg has been the most proactive with it. They, they've had four or five, well, they're up to four or five, not these recent two, that they've, they've abated those activities.
They forced the property owner to abate?
Yes. So all the fines they've provided, they've rescinded because the owner's done it. I think there's one that they're probably, maybe be challenged on, but again, I mean...
So when these people, not just devils act in here, those people declare a nuisance by what means? They arrest them, they're convicted, or?
No, when, when we get to, under this ordinance, if, if, if I'm calling in on somebody's house and somebody else calling in on that illicit activity, then that would allow the chief to, to go out do an investigation on, which we'd get the information from, from this. We know who the owner is, we find out who the tenant is, which hopefully under this, we would know who the tenants are. Then we can make contact to them and then say, look, you, we have an issue with your tenant. This is what is being, saying is, is being done, and then you need to go abate them. Now, if you do not go down the route to abate them, we're gonna cite you as the property owner as well. We're gonna have the tenant and you, because you're, you're, you're allowing for it to happen, for your hardware.
Well, I think that's gonna be a tough.
Yeah, how does that, how does that go with other laws that exist that, one, you have to evict them and you have to give them 30 days if it's?
We're assisting them and evicting them. So we're going to the magistrate court with them with a letter saying the city of Clarksville's found this to be an illicit nuisance. I mean, granted it's 30 days with, with, with the magistrate court, but we're, we're a partner with, with, with the owner.
That's what I'm saying.
That's, we're partnering. Now, if you don't come partner with us, we're coming after you as well. We're filing everyone.
I just think we're asking civilians to take the risk to go evict drug addicts.
I mean, we've got an issue. We've got a drug issue. We've got property issues. We, we, I, I think Martinsburg's doing the right thing, they're going out of the box, but, I mean, let's face it.
It's not getting any better.
It's a litigious world, we'll probably get sued, but you know what? Unless we take actions to correct issues, I think we're stuck, we're gonna continue to, our, our neighbors are gonna continue to abate their value.
Especially if the property owner knows what's going on. I mean, if law enforcement tells you, we got a problem here and you don't correct it, and I can show you where there's an issue.
I totally understand if they're arrested and convicted, I agree 100%. But just by saying, hey, we got calls on this guy, we think it's a nuisance.
Well, no, no, I mean, they're, they're, we're doing an investigation. We're not, I mean, we're gonna follow up with those complaints. Because trust me, there's a lot of neighbors that just called because they're undesirable, undesirable is wanting to listen to that too. It's illicit activity. Yeah, no, absolutely.
And Martin, I, I would think that you would possibly want to look towards Morretown in regards to the, when you're looking at these registered all the properties, et cetera, look to their ordinances up there on how they do it. And in fact, it's every three years that your property gets inspected.
Well...
And, and with that, it's not every time that it turns over. Because imagine in a college town, you have to inspect every, every time that it can move out.
You missed what I said. We, we, right now, we inspect you every time it turns over. This would not happen under this new order. It would be every two years. The reason why I'm working out is every three, they have much more rentals than we do. It takes them three years to get through.
I, I do, I did not hear that.
Okay, yeah, so we're getting rid of that. It's a pain for us and it's a pain for the, the owner as well. And if they don't comply, then we're chasing, we're filing, it doesn't help the relationships. We'd rather do a, a regimental cycle more through.
Any more questions, comments, concerns? That brings us to the last item on the agenda.
Charter. So I'll, I'll hand it over to whomever. Then we'll have an open discussion and I guess we get to have a question.
Well, I, I guess the reason why it's on the agenda is, over time, I think the last two years, we've talked about changes to the charter, whether it be term limits, what's the other?
Correct, I should collection there.
Yeah, but prior to that, what's the sunshine law and referendum recall and, yeah, so, I mean, all of those, so.
Also, I don't know if it'd be something on the charter, like a change of the date of the election on, or councilman, but that could be on, so.
Yeah, that, I mean, that would be a charter issue as well.
Charter issue that you get more individuals to be able to vote when you're electing other officials. Have that on the ballot as well.
So, yeah, so I think, I think what Chad is saying is, is instead of having the election when we currently have it, which is the first Tuesday in June of an odd-numbered year, we would have it on the same day as the May election, and even though it's years when Congress and state offices and all those other things are also on the ballot, tacking onto the ballot.
and state offices and all those other things are also on the ballot, tacking onto the box in the all one election.
I think that definitely helps voter turnout. We've had such a low percentage, what, a fifteen, eighteen, fifteen percent percentage of council in the last two elections, maybe it's very close to that, maybe twenty if we are being generous.
Yeah, but you're looking, I mean, even if you implemented that change now, you're going to have to go out to, I mean, because everybody's got to roll off their cycle.
You'd have to stagger it some.
Yeah, you'd have to have some kind of stagger.
Yeah, I mean, you would have to come up with some transitional way of transitioning from what we're doing now to what we're doing then, which, I mean, there's different ways that council could decide to do that. I mean, one would be, you know, and I guess, I'm not, I'm not saying any one of them is better than the other, but for example, one of them would be, you know, there are certain terms that are ending two years, approximately two years from now, and there are other terms that are ending approximately four years from now. The, you know, by, by changing the charter, you could put in a provision that those, those terms that are currently in place, when that charter change goes into effect, get, get extended to the next election date. So in other words, instead of there being an election on June, on June whatever, two years from now, there was, there would be an election the following May in the, in that even numbered year.
Someone's going to get a five-year term and someone's going to get a three-year term.
After the election.
There's no way around it. I mean, because we're in different years.
Well, here's, what are we accomplishing?
Higher voter turnout.
Yeah, I think that's...
What was the voter out, what was the voter turnout in the general election?
I think what you need to do is check with Fairmont, because Fairmont has exactly what Ryan says, and what's happening is they're voting for, you know, the, the people that vote for the council, you know, they, they're not even, they're just voting for, and they're leaving the council. I mean, it's probably more, but it is much as, they don't, they're not going to vote for, a lot of times, they don't even vote for the council.
I, I mean, usually when there's something on there, you take the title of the, I mean, that's my experience.
I mean, you take control of people who actually mark the box when they get there, but at least they'll be in the room.
Yep, that's true.
I'm, I'm looking to see if I can find voter turnout.
I think this caused more, the public would be more, create a little enthusiasm with the election, that would it not change how we have a strong, I mean, how we have the city manager in a weak May? I just think it would be nice to have the public's, put it, be able to directly vote the mayor and still have the role, but I would like to see, because Kathy, you do the best job that I've seen. If we're going to do that, we would have to make, I believe, a position, as a salary position, for the mayor to be able to continue the type of, how you've been able to do it, who has the means and the time to do it. For example, me, I have a full-time job. I wouldn't be able to do everything that you did. So we'd have to look into something, if we decided to have a direct mayor, that would be their position.
All right, so you're saying that we're not going to have a strong city manager?
No, I didn't say, no, same, same, it'd be just like I'm Bridgeport. Bridgeport, same what, city manager, weak mayor.
So you, you, well, so you, you, you want to change the form of government from council manager to mayor council manager?
I just want...
Because that's a different form of government.
No, I just want to keep the same, just direct, direct.
So you want, you have, if you, if you're direct elected, election then?
Of the mayor.
Then now you change the form of government.
Yeah, okay, then that's...
So you want to go mayor, council, manager, form of government?
Yes.
In, in my opinion, slightly different. I, I think you can uncouple the two. I think you could direct elect the mayor but not change the mayor's role.
That's, and I think that's where, what Chad was suggesting too.
That is what I am...
Direct election of the mayor, but you don't change the form of government, we just, the people elect your...
You are changing. If it's a direct election mayor, you change the form of government. It's mayor, council, manager.
But you're not necessarily changing...
You're changing the form of government.
You're not necessarily changing the responsibilities of the government leaders, are you?
You, you, you have mayor, council, council manager, or just strong mayor. You, you, your, your format still changes.
How does it change just by having a direct election mayor?
I've got a book for you.
Because you're not electing your mayor.
It's, yeah.
It just changes, I mean, even if his role doesn't change, it's still changing the form of government.
I, I agree with it, yeah, yeah. The role doesn't change, but it would, I mean, yes, the form would change, but responsibilities would not necessarily have to change.
Yeah, I'm, I would, I would envision that the responsibilities and of the day-to-day what the mayor does would not change, even though the form, choosing the mayor would change. But I do want to keep... Once we have a mayor, they do the exact same thing they do now.
But however, I want to keep a mayor strong as Kathy, if someone's going to be able to do that, because, for example, if someone elected me or someone that here has a full-time job, would not, would be a downgrade for what we have now.
So I guess, I, I, I think, I think we have varying opinions on, on probably, I mean, hearing you say that and hearing the, the discussions, I, I think we have a difference in opinions on mayoral powers or the duties.
Well, there's...
There's a difference, I think, because you're saying you don't have the, the time, but, but yet you're, you're saying they should be full-time or, or salary. So I, I guess, I, I want to make sure when we're going down the path, that we're, we're fitting in the right...
Which, you know, for me, that wouldn't be the biggest thing, because I guess if you have, if you would be a mayor, you should be, make sure you have the time to do it. So my biggest thing would be just the direct election of the mayor, not necessarily having the salary. This would be something that I would want to continue, as my opinion, to keep having a qualified mayor that we've had in the last eight years.
Well, I, I think what, what Chad's trying to say is, rather than the council elect the mayor, that the citizens should elect the mayor, which, which I agree, I mean, you know, you're representing the city, the citizens should elect the mayor.
Yeah.
And that eliminates situations where we have where people think it's their turn.
Or also back towards them.
You know, because there's no turn to being a mayor, you either can do the job or you can't.
Yeah.
And I think by, but, but then you're talking about changing the whole form of government, so, you know, I...
Also eliminates sort of saying, hey, you've been for me before the election even over, you know, sort of have, it's politics, but this is actually having the citizens.
Right, and I agree.
Yeah, and... Yeah, the way...
Yeah, so you'd have six council, one mayor, and, and there's no need for a vice mayor.
And Martin keeps, and Martin's still the CEO of the city.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But, but he, that changes...
But you've got to understand though, our mayor, the way it's set up now, is just a figurehead of the city.
Yeah, they have no authority.
Right, exactly.
And the mayor would remain at that same figurehead.
And either way it went, in my opinion, either way it went, if you don't have the time or the desire to do what you do, then you shouldn't accept that position.
Right, exactly.
Good point.
Right. And, and, you know, I do have a job, but I was assigned or elected as the position of mayor, so I make time to do what I'm doing.
And you have flexibility.
Yeah.
I should, that's a good one, flexibility.
Right, I'm a little more flexible.
Yes.
The, the most popular form of government is council manager form of government. That's the most popular. In two thousand and six, it grew seven percent over, over ten years. So more, more public entities are moving towards the council manager form of government, getting away from the mayor council form of government. But, but they're moving, the trend is more towards the council manager form of government. That was, that was...
So what, are they like eliminating the mayor?
No, they're, 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 they're going council manager form of government where the council votes upon the mayor.
Okay, but it's a...
See, the problem when you have a mayor running the city, if they don't get reelected, then you've got council that has like a whole new person in charge. At least your city manager is there for some time, you know, you don't want to keep switching gears every time you get a new mayor. I mean, I wouldn't want my company to be run by somebody every four years or two years.
What if hypothetically, you elected the mayor and the mayor says, I got a full-time job, I can't be at anything? But yeah, you can't take that away from them because they were just elected the mayor.
Yeah.
So you could have a mayor that could be absent for any ribbon cutting or anything.
Well, in theory, we could choose a mayor that wouldn't show up either.
Well, that's what she's saying, you, the, the public elects them.
That doesn't mean...
Now, what, what, what was accomplished if they don't show up to anything?
I guess even if they voted again.
Well, I mean, you don't, you don't know that a council person accepting that role is going to show up for you.
No, I, I would hope that seven of you elected, when you elect the one, you know their track record of what they do.
Well, I guess that's when you, I mean, people vote, they vote on faith that that person, I mean, they're going to do it and represent for basically why they voted.
Okay, is this going to make us a better city?
I think, again, I think it, I think it can bring optimism that the citizens have a voice and, I, I think it's a nice change.
Is it worth twenty thousand dollars to do an, an election to change that aspect of the charter?
Well, this would be just, not just that, but maybe also...
You have to look at everything. If you're going to go through it, I think you need to look at everything that...
And if we're going to have an election to change one thing, we might as well put other things on the ballot.
Well, I wouldn't, I would never vote to change one thing on the charter. I mean, I'm not going to spend twenty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money to change one item in the charter. It, to me, accomplishes nothing. So you, you will never get my vote on that.
Well, one thing I want to, I want to keep in mind, our poll workers that are the same people that Ryan's constantly saying are hit by tax increases and things, are your senior citizens. Those people look forward to the extra hundreds of dollars we pay them to work the polls. I mean, they're calling me now, thinking I have something to do with the election in October wanting to work. I mean, I get them, you know, and I've had to, because we have consolidated precincts now, I have had to cancel a lot of them that are upset that they don't get to work. So now, we're not picking who our poll workers are going to be, the city, city people, it could be more county people than city, but yet, those people are going to be, I mean, that's why we did the change for the party affiliation, so that I can use city residents, city people that are paying taxes into the city to work our elections rather than somebody